Six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Take attendance.
Mrs. Castle?
Here.
Mr. Garikawa?
Here.
Mr. Lanacy?
Hello.
Mrs. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Strine?
Here.
Say here.
Say again?
Here.
Here.
What'd you do?
Perfect.
We were just taking attendance.
I broke my thumb.
Skiing?
Yeah.
Seriously? It's just the thumb that's broken?
Yeah, but I did a really good number on it.
We're gonna move to the business office. We'll have to check in here. Okay. When'd you do it?
We have a need for an executive session, so I need somebody to make a motion.
A motion.
Second.
And it's for the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Is that of all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's against? One's Tom. Who's brothers?
Sure.
Put in session at 7:09. Would you care to review the agenda?
Sure. Good evening. Welcome to our March meeting. We appreciate you joining us. This evening, we have a couple of things to highlight. Of course, we're very pleased to always honor our students, so we have a third grade class of Mrs. Curran's class to recognize for our royal recognition. We also will be honoring our boys and girls basketball teams for their completion of a wonderful season. We'll be going over some budget updates, which will kind of give you the state of the state where we are right now. That'll be later on. Capital improvement or capital update from Ed Anker, who's in the audience as well, to kind of give us where we are with our capital project. Of course, some policies. And last but not least, some candidates that are up for tenure tonight of our faculty. So, pretty exciting agenda.
Okay. We'll move right into that royal recognition. You wanna talk about the third grade class?
Certainly.
Travis Crone.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Curran, I might actually ask you to come up wherever you are. Oh, right in front. Gazing out while you'd be in the back, that'd be odd. So, once again, actually, one of the things that those of you that are frequent attenders at board meetings, this is something that's been very special to the board, really bring this program back to the royal recognition. Really, that's a chance for the board and basically the district to kind of recognize students that to kind of go above and beyond, do something that's really worth recognizing. And we've had a variety of students K-8 that we've been able to recognize through a variety of things, whether that's athletics, academics. But what we always try to do is bring it back somehow to the mission statement. And basically, when we kind of solicit people to volunteer or recognize students or nominate a class, we kind of ask the faculty or the coach, the advisor, does that group of students kind of fit into the district's mission statement? Basically, looking for a well-rounded student that's really, again, going above and beyond to be a solid citizen. And so, yet again, our evolution of this program is very exciting because our nominees keep getting more and more exciting. So, Mrs. Curran came to us and said, you know, I'd really like to recognize my class for a product they did as a class project, right? And then it kind of took on a little bit of legs on its own. So, Mrs. Curran, rather than me kind of globally explaining it, I'll ask you to, if you don't mind, kind of give a little overview of why did you nominate your class?
Sure. And I don't want to say too much because I have four very brave students who are gonna speak about our class project, but I am proud of all of them, and I'm proud of Gabe Bentley because this was his idea that he brought to our class, and I'm proud of the class for kind of taking it on and wanting to help Gabe with this project. So, Gabe, are you ready to start? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Bentley. I'm a second in our Mrs. Curran class. Over summer break, I saw a commercial for the ASPCA, American Society for Prevention of Animal Floatedine. My heart broke to see how the animals are living. I have a dog at home and I love him so much. I decided I needed to do something to help the animals. I've been talking to my parents. I came up with the idea to collect donations for the Mohawk Community Society, but to help Mrs. Curran, my classmates, and the school community, our collection was a huge success. The success of our collection, I maybe wanted to do more for the animals. I have an idea for another project. I have outlined my ideas in a flyer. I hope to discuss these ideas further with you in the future. Thank you for your time. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Madison. Our class read about the supplies that the Humane Society needs. We worked together to make a flyer that could go home with a student to let them know about our supply drive. We decorated a box and put it in a lobby to collect the donations that the students brought in. Then Gabe and his mom brought the donation to the Humane Society.
Hi. My name is Alessandra. I love this idea because I love animals. My dog, Oreo, came from a shelter. I brought in a cat toy for the supply drive.
When Gabe came up with the Humane Society project idea, he thought he would share it with all of us so it could become a stronger idea. By working together, we made his idea a big success.
Calling them up.
So, as you can see, what's kind of exciting about this nomination is it really was a student-led project that really kind of came to life, and then the whole class took that on on their own. That's really awesome. It's really nicely done.
I gotta say, it's very brave of you guys to come up and stand in front of all those people. Great project.
Absolutely.
Thank you for doing that.
So, in the spirit of the royal recognition tradition, board members, I'll ask you to rise, please.
No, not my five.
I say this.
Too many i-fives.
So, those of you, as you know, and Mrs. Curran, what I'm gonna ask you to do, and actually, you can join us up here, too. That'd be great, is we'd like to present you with certificates, really to kind of recognize what you've done. Your certificate reads at the bottom for your involvement in the third grade classroom community service project benefiting the Mohawk Custom and Humane Society. So, once again, Mrs. Curran, thank you for nominating your class, but also, students, thanks for really, you know, jumping with this project and kind of making it go. It was awesome. So, what we'll ask you to do, students, as your name is called, we'll ask you to come up. We'll ask you to shake our hands, if that's okay. And then, if you don't mind, we'll ask you to kind of stay over here, so we'll take a picture for the website. That'd be great.
Gabe Bentley. Kristen Campbell. John here.
We'll make sure to read these names on the announcements, so.
Mikey Carey. Alessandra D'Nio. Andrew D'Nio. Kennedy Kelly. Anthony. Bailey McCabe. Deja Nicholson. Callie Nyver. Avery Primo. Vanessa Quinn. Bryce Ropier. Eternity Rosenkranz. Not here. Blake Rosicky. Drew Ryan. Madison Schmidt. Connor Santos. Nicely done.
Okay, so.
Pictures.
So.
Wait, we had a plan.
Oh, we had it. Yeah, we had a good.
The projector's already on. I think it was the screen.
We tried a few different models. We've done the screen, we've done the door.
Do you need a screen? Hold something up there. Light?
Actually, you know, this might work perfectly, so.
Not me.
Sorry that we're just stating this. We just want it to be perfect.
Parents are welcome to come up and take pictures.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Okay, see what? Can you hold your certificates facing out? Is that okay?
Okay.
Perfect. Oh, this is perfect, okay? And one, two, three. Families, any pictures you'd like to take while they're here? Oh, you're there. I'm sorry. Miss D'Nio, thanks. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Well done. Hey, the flowers here.
One of zero. 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 One of zero.
So, as you can see, what's kind of exciting about this nomination is it really was a student-led project that really kind of came to life, and then the whole class took that on on their own. That's really awesome. It's really nicely done.
I gotta say, it's very brave of you guys to come up and stand in front of all those people. Great project.
Absolutely.
Thank you for doing that.
So, in the spirit of the royal recognition tradition, board members, I'll ask you to rise, please.
No, not my five.
I say this.
Too many i-fives.
So, those of you, as you know, and Mrs. Curran, what I'm gonna ask you to do, and actually, you can join us up here, too. That'd be great, is we'd like to present you with a certificate, really to kind of recognize what you've done. Your certificate reads at the bottom for your involvement in the third grade classroom community service project benefiting the Mohawk Custom and Humane Society. So, once again, Mrs. Curran, thank you for nominating your class, but also, students, thanks for really, you know, jumping with this project and kind of making it go. It was awesome. So, what we'll ask you to do, students, as your name is called, we'll ask you to come up. We'll ask you to shake our hands, if that's okay. And then, if you don't mind, we'll ask you to kind of stay over here, so we'll take a picture for the website. That'd be great, so.
Gabe Bentley. Preston Campbell. John here.
We'll make sure to read these names on the announcements, so.
Mikey Carey. Alessandra D'Nio. Andrew D'Nio. Kennedy Kelly. Anthony.
Nice job.
Anthony.
Nice job.
Bailey McCabe. Deja Nicholson. Callie Nyver. Avery Primo. Vanessa Quinn. Bryce Ropier. Eternity Rosenkranz. Not here. Blake Rosicky. Drew Ryan. Madison Schmidt. Connor Santos.
Nice job.
Not here.
Nicely done. Okay, so.
Pictures.
So.
Wait, we had a plan.
Oh, we had it. Yeah, we had a good.
The projector's already on. I think it was the screen.
We tried a few different models. We've done the screen, we've done the door.
Do you need a screen? Hold something up there. Light?
Actually, you know, this might work perfectly, so.
Not me.
Sorry that we're just stating this. We just want it to be perfect.
Parents are welcome to come up and take pictures.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Okay, see what? Can you hold your certificates facing out? Is that okay?
Okay.
Perfect. Oh, this is perfect, okay? And one, two, three. Families, any pictures you'd like to take while they're here? Oh, you're there. I'm sorry. Miss D'Nio, thanks. Okay, thank you. Well done. Hey, the flowers here.
One of zero. 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 One of zero.
Hey, the flowers here.
One of zero. 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 One of zero.
Actually, you know, this might work perfectly, so.
Not me.
Sorry that we're just stating this. We just want it to be perfect.
Parents are welcome to come up and take pictures.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Okay, see what? Can you hold your certificates facing out? Is that okay?
Okay.
Perfect. Oh, this is perfect, okay? And one, two, three. Families, any pictures you'd like to take while they're here? Oh, you're there. I'm sorry. Miss D'Nio, thanks.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Well done.
Good.
Hey, the flowers here.
One of zero. 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 One of zero.
Hey.
Hey.
Actually, we have a second group of students to nominate, and it appears, and again, this could be a little bit of a middle school, perhaps letters not maybe getting home in the right place, but we did actually, all students, you can see by the agenda, want to recognize our boys and girls basketball teams. Jack, it's your lucky day, all right? So, I might ask you to kind of pop in a few things here. We actually had plans. We have certificates for the boys and girls teams, okay, remember, but if I could just speak a little bit on kind of why they were nominated, besides for a great season, there's two pieces I just wouldn't mind kind of acknowledging. As you know, the boys had, you know, a fantastic season, okay, you know, great record, well done. Jack, I might ask you to speak more to the boys piece, if that's okay? But the coaches both felt, okay, Coach Davis and of course Coach Rich nominated both teams for basically their above and beyond sportsmanship and attitude. I will say one piece I'd like to point out with the girls, to kind of represent the girls, was Ms. Rich did nominate the team because, as you might recall, besides having a really stellar season, they kind of worked really hard. Their last game was a little bit tricky. They had a last away game that kind of their sportsmanship was really challenged, basically whether they would rise to the occasion. And what was very impressive, and the boys, you always epitomize this as well, too, but what was very impressive was when we got a report back from our girls who were away at that point in their school to hear, you know, a situation occurred, and the girls really rose above the fray and took the high road, when there could have been, you know, the temptation to maybe engage in poor sportsmanship and not really, you know, represent us well.
...profit that gets donated to the Blue Denials, we're excited. So, we're pleased to facilitate that as well.
Yes, we are. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Okay. 1.9, bidders in communication. Communications to the Board. Letter A had an email from Teri Nakachio. She was asking about the veterans.
Tax exemption.
Oh, it just went out of my head.
Tax exemption.
Tax exemption, yes. I just replied to her and just let her know that we had passed that in October. And she was happy to hear that. Letter B, opportunity for the public to be heard. Do we have any being signed up for this time? No? Okay. The opportunity is given at the meeting also. You don't have to sign up. So, we will move on to 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. 2.1, letter A, CS Arch, bid results.
Hi, everybody. More for public consumption. We had a little bit of briefing with the Board earlier today on the capital project. We got really, really, really good coverage. So, we had probably about eight bidders for each of the four contracts, which is great news. Unfortunately, there were a couple of outliers on the total numbers of the bids. And we want to make sure that we vet those out before we produce and publish the actual results. We still think we're in pretty good shape. However, before we can publish that to the public and to the Board for approval and award of contracts, we really need to get these guys in. Our next step is to get them into our office. We vet them out. We make sure that all the numbers are correct. And then, we either they are correct or we move on to the next contractor. So, unfortunately, we don't have anything to report right now in terms of financial end of things. But we did take bids. We had really good, really good coverage tonight. So, we've got a little bit more work to do. Hopefully, by the end of the month, of this month, we'll have those contract awards ready to go. And then, we'll be able to still break ground coming in the spring. There's a little bit of a white issue out here right now that is going to probably push things a little bit. But these guys will dig in pretty much anything. And the first thing that they're going to do is start digging out back for the additions. So, still moving forward. But we'll have more information for the Board coming up. And we'll go from there.
In general, were they in the ballpark of what you were looking for?
They are. Yep. But like I said, we need to make sure that--
I just wondered, because you had said, because it's like two years out from when we originally put it in, that there's been two more years of increases in work.
Right. We're trying to accomplish or accommodate that in the escalation costs over a period of time. But again, some of those numbers were not quite in line with what we would expect. So, we're going to make sure that those are in line and we can move forward. Okay?
Great.
Anybody have any questions? Anything else?
First and foremost, thank you. The bid process, we're very excited to watch today. We had a full house today in the business office.
Tom was amazed. It was pretty funny, because we're, we do this a lot, so it's kind of old hat with beard. So, these guys will literally start writing down, write down their numbers and put it in the envelope minutes before the bid is. So, one of the contractors is walking down the hallway and Tom's like, "Oh, how's it going?" He's like, "I'm just waiting on the phone, waiting to get bids." And he's like, "Oh, yeah, ha, 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 ha." And the guy's like, "No, really." Literally writing down the number right now and putting it in the--
That's really cool.
Yeah. But it's a pretty interesting process. It's kind of a nail biter for us, no matter what the situation is. But we'll have more to report hopefully next month. But onward and upwards.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ed. So, going along with that, actually, Board, it looks like, Ed, you were looking perhaps maybe the 30th of March might be a great day where the information's processed and the Board could actually accept recommended bids. So, Board, if I may kind of ask you if that would be okay? And perhaps the 30th was the ideal day that the firm was available?
That's what we're shooting for right now. I would ask you, you can check calendars. We can pretty much be flexible at any time during the day.
Is that a public session?
That is a--
Or executive session?
That would typically be an executive session. You know, we will present that information in executive session. And then, what we'll do is follow up in live session with the Board in public forum.
Gotcha.
Number eight.
Thank you.
We'll need to, actually, to clarify a little bit. We'll do that in executive session and then kind of repeat in session, because it has to be recorded as part of the, as part of the minutes that are certified by the clerk. That has to go to SED as part of the total capital project information that goes in the end. So, we'll need to do that afterwards in public forum. Okay?
Okay.
Great. Thanks for your light.
I can do this every evening. I don't know if it's going to happen.
I was going to say, what we can do is we can go into executive session, come out and make the formal records. That'd be perfect. Not to put anyone on the spot, but would the 30th be, is there a time that would--
Are we talking nighttime?
Whatever works for you guys, works for--
Usually, either first time, first thing in the morning or, or, you know, right after, right after work is usually the most advantageous for people, but we're flexible. So, if you guys decide after the time of the--
How long does it typically take? I have to be to work for 7:30, so that's a pretty early morning for a lot of people.
That's probably a little earlier than we're going to be able realistically to get here. We'll do it if you want.
What about like Thursday at 5:15 or something like that? Is that 5:15?
Yeah, 5:15, 5:30.
You're out.
Okay. It's okay?
I can fly here from--
We'll fill your writing.
It can be a little later. It's fine. Whatever, wherever--
Well, Kathy has to go to work, so we're trying to--
Oh, okay. It shouldn't take all that long.
Okay.
So, Thursday at 5:15?
If I can't be there, you two, whatever works for the four of you.
Can you be there?
Yeah.
It sounds like we'll have to stand with the Forum.
I can be there by 5:15.
Thursday?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's Thursday.
Thursday at 5:15. Sounds great.
2.2, district slash superintendent's program report. Is the kind of budget part of that?
It is, yes.
Okay. You've got the slide.
Oh, thank you. So, once again, thank you for joining us for our March meeting and for our budget update. So, what I will ask you is, if you don't mind, would anyone like a copy? And what I'll do is I'll make reference. If anyone would like a copy in the audience of the February presentation, I'm happy to distribute. Now, just no pressure. I'll even hear in case. So, what you see is, I'm going to basically give you kind of overview of the, where we stand right now, which might not be much different than February, because as you can imagine, in between, we did this presentation. The last one that you'll see that's on the chairs was done on February 16th, right before the February vacation. We've been back, of course, a couple weeks. We had a few snow days in between. And as you see, not much has changed in terms of our global picture. But there are some things for the Board to consider, at least tonight, maybe think about over the next weeks that might inform us as more information becomes available. So, we kind of give you where we are. And our goal tonight really is to kind of look at something and consider perhaps the next direction you'd like to go in terms of a tax levy. And also, perhaps, if you feel there's another session required as we get more information, but we'll kind of get that in one second. So, to give you an overview of kind of where we are, and again, we're giving you some global statistics. And of course, any questions, never hesitate to let us know. As you know from last time, I did some repeats. But this, you'll notice there's some combination of the last presentation, this one. We had an overall increase at present moment of $21,620 in state aid. So, again, when you look at that over the global piece, that's an increase from year to year in foundation aid alone, so $21,620. And again, that's as of this moment, as you know, right now, if you've seen, you know, the headlines of the paper, the branches of our state government are going back and forth. Okay, there's been some pretty exciting things that were proposed today by the Assembly and of course, the Senate. So, we'll see whether that takes the executive level or whether that is passed April 1st. So, you see, April 1st is kind of our deadline. That's why you're seeing politically things gear up right now, because this is kind of the go time. Come down on April 1st, oh, and that final budget is passed. So, again, at this point now, though, I think we're frozen. We're looking at an increase of $21,620 in foundation aid. The district has the right to levy taxes approximately $91,000 as a result of the tax cap levy legislation. And again, that's where, that's a misnomer. We always call it a 2% tax cap. But as we recall before, that would lead to about a 1.8% levy increase. So, again, we can levy a maximum of $91,000. The district could always, of course, elect to levy less. But if you wanted to maximize, of course, what you can levy, it'd be 1.8. So, again, people sometimes, you're seeing the tax cap formula being Oregon District. Last year, you might recall, we raised, we had a levy limit of 0.78%, which of course is very limiting. So, 1.8% is pretty close to that 2%. But again, that's still, of course, very limiting as well. So, you can see, it depends on, of course, growth factor and of course, our base that we're raising that. So, 0.78 was last year. Right now, based on the formula, that's a pretty fixed formula that we plug in. And of course, Bell is fantastic at kind of making that work in the pilot program. $91,000 is what we basically can max levy. So, our total guaranteed budget increase, meaning from budget year to budget year, would be approximately $112,620. Basically, it's taking those two figures, assuming that the district levied its max at the 1.8% levy. And again, that's not necessarily the tax rate at townships that I always kind of underscore. So, again, North Greenbush, Posting Hill, Brunswick, where we have properties, it wouldn't necessarily equate to that. That would depend on equalization rates of property. So, again, that's 1.8% tax levy on the district's end. What that computes to in the town would be different. So, that could be anywhere from, you know, 1%, less than that, to over, over 2%. So, total guaranteed is $112,000. But globally summarizing, which I did in the other presentation, and by all means, if you take a look, our fixed cost, meaning the things we can't negotiate that are really not, that are out of our purview to even think about, contractually mandated raises, health insurance increases, retirement contributions to the ERS system and the TRS system, is approximately $185,000. So, as you can see, that's an increase in state aid. That's an increase in levy. But really, already, there's a gap, because our fixed costs just to levy make bank for the next year to pay, to pay teachers at their step. Health insurance increases, again, health insurance went up about 6%. Prescription drug costs came in. And again, they came in lower than anticipated, which was good. They came in at about 5% higher. Last year, they were 23% higher. So, that's good, but you're still talking 5% more than it's needed. So, again, we overbudgeted or overestimated in some ways, which is good. But that still leaves about a gap of about $185,000. That would have been greater, as you can imagine, had health insurance gone up, you know, to 10%, let's say. So, this reflects about a minimal gap of $183,000 if more funding is not restored in the final budget. So, basically, see, there's approximately, our fixed costs are $185,000. Now, you might be saying, "Well, wait a second. If I subtract $185,000 and I take away the 112, wouldn't that leave us with a 60-something?" That's really not the case, because we haven't factored in everything else as well. So, you'll see, basically, that minimal gap includes everything from tuition increases for our students that are in high school, special ed increases, service fees for BOCS, things like that. So, really, we've calculated right now that our minimal gap is $183,000. Now, again, these are all estimations. And that's, of course, estimating, very question. But we figured right now, as a quick snapshot, taking all budget lines into consideration of going up, costs going up, like I said, BOCS are, costs are very reasonable or Quest are, but they still go up 1% to 3% each service. So, again, when you add those up conglomerately, tuition costs, health insurance costs, we're looking at about a $183,000 gap right now at this moment. And again, this also does not reflect full raises to other bargaining units, tuition increases, significant program addition, or investment allocating resources for regular and special ed programs. So, again, that's maintaining what we have. And of course, increasing with step and increasing with predicted costs, for example, the services that we contract with, you know, we've added in that increase. But that doesn't include any major addition of, you know, for example, another faculty member or an additional program. So, it's basically maintaining what we have, our special ed placeholders I referenced in the other presentation. And that's basically kind of where we see is about a minimal gap. Now, again, that's certainly, Bell and I work diligently daily. We're estimating on the, on the safe side. That's our big piece, of course, of our goals, to always estimate and budget on the safe side. Obviously, when we get closer to April 1st, our goal is to really go pre-exact cost. So, example, fuel is one that we look at very closely. Fuel went down. Last year, we had a budget of about $83,000 for fuel. That's one I reference a lot. I believe we spent about $33,000 in fuel. But so, this year, we budgeted about $50-something thousand. Now, fuel maintained the same level of cost. That's a good thing. But as you can imagine, this winter, we used a lot more fuel than we did last year. So, of course, going into next year, we want to make sure, right now, we're anticipating another cold winter. We'd rather anticipate a cold winter and fuel going up than saying, "Well, let's budget right to $33,000 and we'll be set." Because once again, when that line goes away, we're now pulling from other places and that's not safe. So, really, we're estimating very safely. That's why that minimal gap might seem high. But that's, of course, assuming that that's giving us some room to play, of course, as we get closer to the end of the budget cycle. So, things to still consider. So, again, as we look at these, this is the main decision where we are right now for the Board, probably prior to April 1st, to kind of think about, and as a group, we can discuss that as well, is, as discussed in our tax formula, the carryover fund that we have, again, by being fiscally conservative last year, is about $33,852. Well, I shouldn't, it's not about, it's exactly $33,852. What we did last year was, we used half of that, okay, so that'd be $67,000 and change we had left in the carryover, meaning the district, two years ago, elected not to levy that full amount. So, if we go back to my last slide here of 1.8 levy, two years ago, the district elected to not levy the full amount. So, whatever amount they levied allowed a carryover, meaning that basically the state said, "Okay, you didn't take your full amount, but you can bank that and use that another time." And that's where that $67,000 came from last year. The district used half of that last year towards, of course, closing that gap, leaving $33,852. So, basically, the district has something to consider, is how much, if any, is applied to the next year's budget to close the gap. The perk of using, obviously, carryover funds is that it does increase your foundation and your base. So, basically, like any increase, if you increase the base salary, any increase on top end in future years, that's a good thing. So, of course, it raises the, you know, the base, if you will, the foundation. But of course, similar to last year, we used half of it. We have half now. We could use all of it. We could use half of that. But it is a finite piece. So, again, as much as we don't anticipate it being taken away, there was a question that came up last year, and I tried to underscore that in each presentation, it is kind of one of those eggs that we haven't used yet. So, do we use it all now? Do we save some of it? Or do we use none of it? But of course, again, right now, at this present moment, we still have that gap we're trying to close. Just to give you something to consider, and a lot of this might be also what you want to put out to the community, again, that's where this tax cap formula has a few flaws, as you can see, is if the district elected to use, levy the maximum amount and then use the entire carryover balance that's left, the $33,852, the district would be going out at a 2.45 levy if all funds are used. So, even though that's a 2% tax cap formula, the district would be putting out a 2.45% increase. So, again, sometimes that's confusing to taxpayers as well. Wait a second, there's a cap. Why is it 2.45? But again, this is a formula. It's a fixed formula. It's not something we can negotiate. So, that would be if you use the entire formula. Now, certainly, you could elect, or the district could elect to use, let's say, half of that and then save the other half, of course, for subsequent years. Now, we did some quick calculations on this official piece of paper. And so, all the carryover would be 2.45%. If you use, for example, half the carryover, that'd be a tax levy of 2.13%. And if you didn't do any carryover, it'd be 1.8% and then anywhere in between. So, if we said, you know, well, let's use $10,000 of that, it would be somewhere between 1.8% and 2.13%. So, again, the district could consider that. Now, of course, what makes this a difficult question to answer necessarily right now is it depends, obviously, on the, on the final budget number. Now, certainly, if our foundation aid suddenly were increased by a significant amount, the district might say, "Let's bank that for another day and we'll stick with the 1.8" or maybe even less, depending on how much was restored. There's a lot of very grandiose things published today about what, you know, different branches were proposing. However, obviously, if those, if all things were to stay the same, the district would have to consider how much they'd want to apply towards maybe closing that gap. Of course, what we still consider, that's kind of what I alluded to before, Bell and I, as I said, I would like to say we meet once a day, but I think it's more like three or four times a day. And we love it. So, basically, it's basically a budget line reallocation. That's where we basically kind of get down to that gap. So, when people say, "Wait a second, why did you say 1.3?" That's where we look at everything from, again, our revenue as well. So, basically, some of that also includes, so I may say, not just our increase of cost, but also, we also estimate very conservatively our revenue, meaning what we bring in. Another little example of that is we do receive revenue for health services that we do for, like St. Jude's and for outside pieces. When we lose students at St. Jude's, we lose revenue coming in for health services. So, again, revenue that might be $80,000. We saw a very big decrease in that, because St. Jude's lost, you know, a lot of students last year, actually, a sneaky amount of students. Revenue in terms of building use, you know, some years, a couple years ago, we had a soccer campus here in the summer that raised about $4,000. Now, we don't have tons of value using our camp, our fields, because they have their fields built now. That's less revenue coming in. So, we tend to estimate our revenue accordingly as well. You know, what are we taking in? And of course, our foundation aid and our billings and things like that. So, again, revenue and expenses is kind of where we get that gap from. So, of course, we're still looking at all those things, fuel costs, prescription drug costs and technology. And tuition revenue, of course, that's a big thing, as you know, is the loss of students, meaning our eighth graders that now, of course, graduate, our little red students or our North Greenberg students that graduate eighth grade, we lose that revenue. And of course, then, the North Greenberg school district starts paying their high school tuition out of their coffers. And of course, we look at picking up students this year. As you know, last year, we picked up 11 little red students coming into second grade. This year, I think we're estimated at about five. So, as you can see, that's kind of a loss, you know, 11 students versus five students coming in and, of course, going up. That's a difference in revenue. So, that's kind of where some of that gap comes from right now as well. And of course, we never want to bank too much on that revenue, because that could change at a moment's notice. And of course, we just did high school selection for our eighth graders. So, we're able to really pinpoint. But of course, as you know, that could be a moving target, because while a student might select, for example, Columbia High School right now, they certainly could change in the next month or so. So, we certainly don't want to budget exclusively for 10 students to go to Troy. And then, suddenly, if they switch to Columbia High School or Britton Kill, we're not prepared for that. So, Bell, I have to give you credit for this formula. We basically use the idea of averaging the tuition costs of the four schools and then using that placeholder number. So, basically, taking Troy, Britton Kill, Labor Park and East Greenbush, averaging the tuition costs and budgeting for that for all of our students. So, that assumes that some will select Troy, which is our lowest price, Britton Kill, which is our highest price, and somewhere we'll be in between. But again, looking at kind of high school pieces, we're still waiting on that from Mrs. Murphy to see what did our students actually choose? You know, if we had 25 students choose Britton Kill, that's different than 14 or 15 choosing Troy. So, again, we'll see kind of where that comes out. And of course, a master schedule, which I always put for 1718, that basically offers the most to students, meaning that's not just the elementary level, making sure we have common planning time and, of course, appropriate specials. But one of the things that people do really commend us for is that despite being a small school, like when we put small school, it's not an excuse, meaning it's, we're running 103 students in a middle school, we're not, not offering the same program as Gulf Middle School, Algonquin Middle School. We're offering, students can leave here upwards of, I think, Dr. Yuris, what do we figure, four or five units of credit going into high school. That's a big deal. I mean, that's what makes us competitive and people just not saying, "Well, what's the difference of going to GD versus if I went to Algonquin? I could leave with honors English, honors math, earth science, studio art. You can do that here." And so, it's not, and also, what I've been very impressed with, I'm going to keep saying this, is our students have the opportunity to take either all or none of those opportunities as well. So, meaning it's not a matter of you're either on the A track or the B track. But we schedule very appropriately, which does require resources, so that a student doesn't necessarily have to say, "Well, I have to choose between art and algebra or music and earth science." We allow that there's, that all those choices are available to all students. So, basically, this goes back to, does a program affect what's best for students? And again, as cliché as it sounds, that's everything that we budget for, we look at. Okay, does really the program, the schedule, what we're doing, meet the needs for students? And if it's not best for students, then why are we doing it? And that's the question we kind of keep answering. So, we look at each budget line and what is best for students, not what is best for us, what is best for our students, what do they need. But of course, bullying goal number five, we're providing a quality education while remaining fiscally responsible, meaning not adding programming that we can't sustain, not capriciously adding funding to something that we know isn't going to be, you know, something that we're going to use for students. And of course, our mission statement and kind of emphasis is all of that. So, priorities remain, okay? Many opportunities for our students as possible to maintain the GD academic, social and emotional experience, okay, sports, athletics, clubs and activities, that we're not kind of, you know, cutting one area of programming to increase another or vice versa, to kind of balance our books. Support continuous growth and professional development for our staff, maintaining that line ends like that, that might not be as visible to the community, but they are very valuable and, of course, vital, I should say, not just valuable, but vital to our staff. And of course, maintaining technology growth and stamina. As you know, we're very excited. We keep adding devices. Okay, we're pretty close to almost being, I'd say in 3-3, pretty much almost one-to-one, you know, where every student effectively has access to a piece of technology that they can access at any given time, for the most part. But of course, the key is maintaining that and maintaining the stamina. Can the network support that when the device is break? Do we have resources to fix them? And of course, providing a comprehensive model for the goals, a fiscally short and long haul. So, I always will go back to the example of, wouldn't it be great if we just add another section and we could lower the cost size for here? Wouldn't it be great? That's fantastic. But again, maintaining that over the course of the long haul is very difficult. So, as you can imagine, adding a staff member might be a great idea of what we look at chemist's estate in the next five, 10 years, rather than, well, we did it one year, but then suddenly, the next year, we couldn't maintain that, because of course, costs could be revised as well. So, next steps, advocacy, of course, just seeing groups come out, okay, PTOs, PTAs, nice that the unions are coming out, of course, to really advocate for the final, you know, more funding for schools. So, really, we're not going to know, I don't think, until April 1st. I shouldn't say I don't think. That's one thing I am positive about. I think April 1st would truly be the deadline, as it is, where we get that final state aid run and say, "Okay, what are we looking at? Okay, did the Assembly, did the Senate come to any sort of agreement as to increase in school funding? And if so, what does that mean for wanting skill?" Okay, so, as you can see, there's a lot of sensational headlines. Okay, so, as you can see, there's a lot of sensational headlines. What does that mean for our district, not just, you know, a high-needs or low-needs district? And, of course, applies some internally developed scenarios to see what the final number to use, the 18, 17, 18 resources. So, basically, what Bell and I do is kind of apply, if that number truly were to stay the same, what will we need to do to close that gap that would have the least impact on students, okay? But, of course, the next piece is to present to you a comprehensive plan, but some of that does have those moving parts that need to be kind of filled in. So, for example, if April 1st comes, and that state aid number stays at 21,00620, then, of course, we are prepared to present to you a plan of how to really close that gap with minimal impact to students, or, I should say, the least disruption to students. The board's role, maybe right now, is to kind of consider, of course, two things. One is, going back to that cap, it mainly would be to think about, at this point, and again, obviously, some of that might depend on whether that state aid increases, do you want to use that entire carryover fund, part of it, none of it? And levy up to 2.4 or 5% or somewhere in between? Or would you like to wait? And, of course, the second piece is, as you can imagine, this is kind of an update that we shared from February, so we're still waiting. So, that's why, similar to what Ed had proposed with the capital project, we don't want to put something out to the community and have false sensations, meaning, "Oh, my God, there's a gap at 183,000, we're cutting 16 people, and then suddenly, everybody's outside save our school." You know, let's wait and see kind of where we're at first, before we kind of panic, but obviously, we want to know that that's a solid number. So, that's why we're reticent to say, "Well, here's what we do if we had to meet this goal, because we have lots of plans in place." So, to the board, the next piece on the agenda, or should I say, on the budget calendar, is April 13th would be typically when you would adopt the budget. Now, what that means, as you know, is you're mainly adopting the levy and the total amount of the budget. You're not necessarily adopting program, you're adopting a final budget and a final levy, and, of course, the inner workings of each code is still flexible, if that makes sense. So, you're basically the April 13th board meeting, kind of saying, "Okay, here's what we would want to go out, we'd want to go out at, you know, 1. something percent or 2. something percent with a final overall budget of 9 million, blank, 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 blank." And then, of course, that would be the number we'd work around. So, again, in terms of, well, what would that mean? What would that mean? That would be something that could be worked out at a later time or presented. What I propose to you is, the goal would be that April 1st, we know where we're at, and then, pretty much, Bell and I can really construct the rest of this house and make it a solid foundation. But, of course, that would be after April 1st, and probably, the question is, would you like to have something in between April 1st and April 13th as kind of a, here's where we're at, here's our numbers, here's what this will mean for you, and that's, here's our budget, here's what it will, what programs it will include, here's what it will include in reductions, if that was applicable. Or, on the other off end, here's what it will include in additions. As you know, part of the February 13th, 16th budget included some recommendations for things to consider as things that we might want to either add resources to or increases. So, that, of course, would be part of that April 13th presentation, but I just didn't want to put you on the spot as feeling like you had to adopt that that night, if you wanted to digest that. So, I kind of opened up discussion, either to think about, I guess, the first question is, where you feel about the carryover funds? Or, again, is it too soon? And, of course, the next question would be, would you want to maybe add another workshop before the 13th to kind of give the opportunity for the public to see what's going to be put before you to potentially adopt? So, I knew a lot of you, and I apologize, but it's something to really just kind of think about, I know it's a moving target, but really, kind of two big things at this point to think about. So, first and foremost, questions from anyone?
Sounds very thorough.
Oh, thank you. And if I may say, too, it's a very difficult question to answer right now, as you can imagine, because in essence, you're, the challenge we have is, if you were right now committed to definitely use that entire carryover, that might, your decision might be swayed, depending on how much foundation aid is increased, if any, and you might decide. So, again, that's why we've been reticent to put out a very solid picture, because that would all depend on what you want to do. So, I'm not sure if you may want to think about this right now, we could talk as a group, do you want to hold on making decisions? Usually, what we've done in the past, last year, I should say, is, once you've given us a number of, you know, we want to use, like, except half the carryover, we have these, that becomes a finite thing, we use that and we work around that. Okay, we know that we're not going to go above 33,000 on the carryover, the levy will be this, and then we work backwards. But, again, that's totally up to you guys, if you wanted to wait and see. And, of course, the second question is kind of more logistical, would you want to add, perhaps, another budget hearing, a budget night where, basically, after we have the April 1st numbers, I can at least run through what we were thinking, what we proposed? And, of course, then make any changes in between, so that a final product would be adopted by April 13th.
For me, I can't address the carryover without knowing who are the numbers, but I would be more comfortable having a meeting somewhere between April 1st and the 13th. So, we're not seeing it for the first time on the 13th, and we have time to discuss, maybe tweak, maybe, I don't know, but I would, personally, I would just feel more comfortable having something in the middle.
I would, too. Bobby?
Yeah, I agree with Kathy, and then the carryover fund, just, I don't know, you know, what have we done in the past, or what's been the, what's been the run, is that higher or lower? You know, just to get a sense of what that looks like, that amount compared to past years.
Sure. So, Andy, I don't know if you want to speak to this, this was the
This was the first one.
The first time we had a carryover was two years ago, actually, so that's a great question. So, I think we've always levied the max amount, looks like, except for two, two years ago?
Don't mind.
Great question, better.
Do you know that, Bill?
Two years ago was the first time we had, we did not take the max, but before that, we could not, they didn't allow you to have carryover. But I think, once the carryover's gone, it's gone.
Right. It gets very, basically, into the foundation, but it wasn't swatted.
It pushes the face up, but...
I would not want to go much over to, I can definitely speak to that. You know, you mentioned half of it would be 2.13, I'd even, you know, if we can, I don't know how it works, but even if we could just keep it at, like, 1.99, so it's under the 2, that would be, you know, kind of how I'm feeling.
I kind of feel like Kathy and Eric said, I'd want to know what our numbers were before trying to make that decision. I mean, we may be at a point where we don't have a choice to make up the gap, we may need to do that. I wouldn't be opposed to another meeting. If we did, though, could we tweak the meeting we're doing with Ed to that same night? Rather than meet on a Thursday, and then the following Tuesday, and then the following Thursday?
It's an excellent idea. The only reticence I'd have is that Ed, that we took us from March 30th, and I think we still might be in this kind of, like, window of kind of watching that midnight, April 1st kind of piece.
And that's only going to take a couple minutes, yeah?
Well, I know, but I'm saying, like, if we met, like, I know the 1st is a Saturday, if we met the 3rd or the 4th, do you think it would be a big deal with that, if we pushed that out a couple days?
Oh, I see, so, I got you.
Combine the two.
I got you. If I may throw out there, I think that's a great idea, is, my suggestion would be, if you're okay with this, let me know, or if you're not okay, is, April 1st, obviously, is the budget deadline, so I'll be excited to kind of see what we do, then we
That's if they pass it.
If they pass it, yes.
April fools.
You have some power in the state, so.
I have no power.
How many times have they passed it on time?
So, we're going to sue, and really just hope it's another great year of passing it on time, it's going to be great. And, what I might suggest, that's okay, and I can reach out to Ed to see if that would be too late in terms of getting contracts, because that is, we go to, just pulling up a calendar, if that's okay, I'm not tweeting or texting, I'm sorry.
Tom, your hard calendar is right there.
Oh, that's good. So, we have, April 1st is
Saturday.
A Saturday, so that'll be interesting to see if that happens. So, then we get to the 3rd, the 3rd, we probably could, like I said, it just, it could be processing, and, of course, you know, really kind of getting together some pieces, but I don't know that that might not be impossible. I mean, certainly, if the board wanted to do the 3rd, I can obviously reach out to Ed and let know. We go to Washington that week, so I would be out of town
Yeah.
Through the 8th, and then I was going to throw out there, the 10th would be some, the 10th would be a nice, solid day, because at least it would allow us some, a chance to meet, and then, of course, if we had a tweak, go from there. But, of course, I'm not sure if Ed could wait that long, and I don't want to hold anything up either, especially with the project. So, certainly, we could try for the 3rd. I would say the 3rd or the 10th would be what I would suggest, only because, well, because of DC, and then we get to the 11th or 12th, or just a day or two before the board meeting, so, to throw out to you guys, Andy.
I would say the 10th, just because, if they don't change, you know, are they really going to approve the budget on the 1st? At least gives some time there, a little bit of room to get the, to see the proven so that we can
Give poor Bell time to run the number.
And, Kathy, I would say the 10th.
I wouldn't move the CS Arch to the 10th.
Yeah, I would, I would keep that.
Thursday, the 30th, for me to come here is really no big deal, since it's the night before the play, so I'm going to be, you know, I'm here every single day.
So, the 30th and the 10th? So, you're saying the 30th and the 10th?
No, I'm saying both. I'm saying, we got to do the CS Arch on the 30th, we can't hold them to the 10th.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to wait that long. I was just, if it was, like, the following Monday?
I agree.
Maybe they could wait that long, but another whole week, I don't know.
And I would, I would have no, I hope you don't, any problem doing the 3rd, just my fear would be this, if the 1st comes, and that's a 1st at midnight, now it's the 2nd, and we're trying to process numbers, and I'd hate to have us gather the community the 3rd and say, "Well, we're still waiting for this, but..." And then we're kind of still in that. So, is that okay? The 10th would be great. But that's okay with you guys. And what we do is, it's purely a budget meeting. Do we want to go for a certain time, or time that, um?
6:30, or 7:00?
6:30?
6:30. We're calling it a budget workshop?
Call it a budget workshop, sounds good. That way, it's a budget workshop, it's an open, and that's exclusively what we're doing, is we're just going over the proposed budget, and, of course, any tweaks, any suggestions, and then I'll come back to you 13th with something to approve ideally, or consider to approve.
Can leave the 30th in place?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I think the 30th, that should be a relatively quick meeting, I think that's going to be a pretty quick logistical piece, more consent agenda.
Right.
Sounds good? Okay, great, so, we'll be back April 10th for the budget piece, and then, well, the 30th, and then, of course, April 13th will be the official meeting to adopt.
Whoa.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 2.3, the board report.
You know, I thought this was a pretty quick month, and then I counted the days, and there's only 12 days between the last board meeting and today, 12 days of school, the snow days, and a week off. So, I'm like, okay, that did fly by. Those 12 days, we were very busy, we had a lot of professional development opportunities in those 12 days. We had Jane King come from Questar, who's a specialist in science, because we're looking at the next generation, are the new state science standards, which have been adopted, so we're really exploring that. And each teacher, groups of teachers, had a two-hour staff development, looking at these standards, looking at what we're doing, where are the gaps, how we can include more engineering and more of those hands-on experience for our students. Karen Carney and Bethany Wallace took a trip with me, and we explored some of the science standards, some of the things that districts in the region are doing to align with those standards, so we've had some great experiences, and we're going on another field trip in another couple weeks, so we're really looking at what we're doing here with our kids, and how we can enhance what we're already doing, so that would meet the needs of putting those new standards in place. So, a lot of science work out there in the area of ELA. We had a lot of PD, I want to thank Andrew Newmark for doing a lot of, he did some model lessons in kindergarten and first grade, which were very helpful, and then teams debriefed that, talked about best practices, and then put, actually, in writing, into a kind of plan for those things that we'd like to see moving forward in each grade level, to really ensure that our students have their individual needs met in small group instruction, and we'll be taking that show on the road and working through all the different grade levels, really just talking about best practices. So, thank you, Andrew, and all those who participated, it's really good professional development. In math, some of us, Bethany Wallace and Karen Carney, we went to Questar training, how to enrich and help that higher-end students that we not often neglect, but really looking at how we can enhance and differentiate instruction at every grade level. So, thank you to Bethany for going to that, and, you know, we're going to continue that as an area to looking as much as we help how to remediate and reteach, how are we enriching students in every classroom? What else can we do? Albany Law came, and Keith Hirakawa brought some students to second grade, which was a great project. And Kate Cronin is here, Karen Carney, and their second graders did writing pieces on persuasive writing, which were just amazing. So, Dr. Riordan is working on getting a pool in the school, and I'm working on getting an ice cream truck to just be parked out here every day, so the second graders had a lot of fun with that, so thank you, our second grading teams, for bringing that.
Keith also had his group advocate for less parties there, too, which is interesting, I think, right?
Fewer parties.
More recess, less parties, more gin, more ice cream. All the essentials were covered.
But there weren't a lot of, like, extended bedtimes?
No.
Or things at home, they were pretty
Yeah. Home was fine, everybody.
Dr. Riordan, so that was a lot of fun, but thank you to second grade and to Albany Law for those, those experiences are wonderful. We also had kindergarten open house, which was wonderful, so thank you to Gina Pony and Lyndy Sanger for presenting a wonderful open house to parents. We actually, I think, today got our 30th students so far, so that's great, and now we know that, you know, we will run the two classes, but we were a little nervous there, hanging on the low 20s. So, we are up to the 30 mark, and Kim Herselbets is here, and she's planning the kindergarten screening, which is a large undertaking, and that will happen on the 31st of March, so all the chairups will be here running around, getting eyes and ears and nose and everything else checked, and letters and numbers, no nose, you're not venturing the nose. So, we have that to look forward to. We're also getting ready for the ELA test, so there's lots of training, and Jean Marie Steffek, thank you for all your help in just trying to figure out where we're going to accommodate all the students who need extra time or tests read, and so that's been a big undertaking. So, a lot of training's going on and getting ready for that. Next week, our two park nights, we're having a showing of the documentary, I Am Alala, that's Tuesday. Wednesday is, Meryl Bay is going to be here for a local author, she was here before in the past, and the kids really love her work, so those are things coming up, and kind of a busy 12 days.
Okay, thank you. 2.4 PTO report, what else came up here for PTO?
We had a very successful talent show.
Oh, yeah.
There were 20 acts, I'm not sure exactly how many kids, but there was a lot of kids. Because they, there was less acts than last year, but there was more group acts, so they all got together and did a lot of groups. We got a lot of food for Hope Seven and Cash donations, and the eighth grade made over $300.
Oh, you meant pizza, sorry.
No!
How weird, it's not allowed to.
Did Jason video it by any chance?
We videoed, not Jason, but the committee, we had a video camera.
Because I was, I had to work, so I wasn't able to come, so I'd love to, love to see him.
We did it, but every year, unfortunately, tech normally does it, couldn't be here, so the equipment's not at, but it's his, but he's going to edit it for us, so we still, you know, maybe he's coming. So, yes, too much pizza was ordered, but that's not what I was referring to, I was talking about the food donation to Hope Seven, a lot of food donations.
Made it happen.
That's the only thing I can think of for PTO, but I know, well, the book fair, so the book fair's coming. Anybody else ever think of anything? Fair play, PTO would drive. Oh, yeah, Science Club was extended again.
Obviously, the mind is next Saturday, and PTO, what are shirts?
No, that's right. There's a lot going on, NISBA's this Saturday. A lot going on, no, not just PTO, kid stuff. Sure, hey, you know, just jumping in again. Not shy.
We're attending, just as a note, we're attending a workshop on Saturday at Questar?
Yes, we are.
What time is that again?
9:00 to 11:30 with Mike Ford.
Be there, be square.
Absolutely. We were one of the few last time, so it'll be interesting.
Okay, moving on to appointments and authorizations, 3.0. Looks like we have a consent agenda for 3.1 to 3.11. Is anybody okay with that?
You have objections?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, not an objection, sorry, just, just a note, there was a change in the Wild Center field trip date to June 6th. It was June 1st in the original agenda, so it's just June 6th. This one's right, the one you have in front of you, but I think the one you had at home was June 1st, I think, so the team had changed the trips, so just.
Okay, 3.1, approve CSC, CPSC recommendations as per attached. 3.2, be it resolved that pursuant to the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, following be appointed to tenure to the position to which they have served the required probationary period specified below. Sarah Sepp, special education tenure area, commencement of tenure appointment, June 30th, 2017, certification status permanent. 3.3, be it resolved pursuant to the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the following be appointed to tenure to the position to which they have served the required probationary period specified below. Bethany Wallace, tenure area elementary education, commencement of tenure appointment, June 30th, 2017, certification status permanent. 3.4, approval of substitutes, looks like we just have one, Emily Labate?
Labate, but I said Labate, too.
As a certified substitute teacher at $90 per day. 3.5, approve snow piling service season contract to High Tech, High Tech lawn and snow service for the 17, 18 school year at $6,000 for the season. Price for salt is $250 per application, and removal of snow slash pushback upon request is 400 per occurrence. 3.6, approve refuse removal service contract to County Waste and Recycling Services Incorporated for the 17, 18 school year at $400 per month. 3.7, approve transportation maintenance, storage of vehicles and vehicle service contract to Molson's Garage for the 17, 18 school year, at the rates of storage, 6,000 for the year, plus the plus of electricity, preventative maintenance inspection at $82.50 per bus, DOT inspections at $85, and the quest of other service and repair at $85 per hour. 3.8, approve the 7th grade field trip to the Wild Center on June 6th, 2017. 3.9, approve the 8th grade field trip to Washington DC on April 5th through the 8th, 2017. 3.10, approve the 5th grade field trip to Liberty State Park on June 12th, 2017. And 3.1, approve the 2017, 18 school district calendar. May I have a motion for all that?
Motion.
Second?
Any discussion? Anything you want to say about the Bethany or Sarah?
Sure. As you know, and the board is kind of aware of this, you know, the process of tenure is something that really should never be taken lightly, and that's something that I think people sometimes forget, when they see it on the agenda, while it's landed here, it's certainly meant that that candidate has really displayed their aptitude, their commitment to the district over the course of three years. And, again, that's three, three years of, you know, report cards, observations, parent interactions, you know, assessment results, demeanor, all those things kind of come into play when you look at whether a candidate is meant to make a pretty significant decision, whether that person is worthy of district tenure. And so, what I'm very proud of in our district is that, you know, really, it isn't something we take lightly, so when we put a candidate up for tenure, it's not just because it's been three years, it's because they've really displayed that, and if you were to look in their folder, you'd see it's just, it's filled with documentation that shows that this is a, a decision, that's a lifelong decision that the district's proud to make. So, two fantastic candidates that are much deserving of this honor.
No, they don't.
Clap if you want.
Just randomly there, if you do it.
Any discussion, any questions, comments?
Mrs. Casson? Mr. Hirakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. String?
Yes.
Now you may clap.
Thank you for being here. See you again, above and beyond.
Moving on to 3.12, first readings, looks like our list is small this time.
Oh, no, that's good. May I make a recommendation, actually, to the policy committee? By the way, nicely done, as your policy committee have just emailed NISBA, looking for the 5,000 series, and they're not nearly close to sending this yet, because we're so far ahead. So, at this point now, we're just waiting for NISBA, so you'll see a lot of the 4,000 series, first part, but if I could ask, so, 4.5 to 6.2 web design and maintenance, I did consult with Jason McCord, who today did hand me a few suggestions he had, so if it's okay, rather than just kind of running those through, could we pull that one and bring that, just out of efficacy, bring that back to the policy committee, so you could see, they're not major changes, it's just kind of a chain of command that Jason kind of was recommending.
Is it F, you said?
4.5 to 6.2.
Okay.
Web page design and maintenance?
Yep.
Oh, F, I'm sorry, I was like, I was like, no, it's number 4.5, I'm sorry, yes. So, yes, if we could, if that's okay with the committee, we'll pull that completely transparent off the first reading, so that way we can, you can see what Jason recommended. And I don't think we're in a rush for that one, that's good.
So, 3.12, first readings, policy 4513, library material selection, policy 4526, computer use in instruction, acceptable use. Regulation 4526, computer use in instruction, acceptable use. Policy 4526.1, internet safety. Regulation 4526.1, internet safety. Policy 4531, field trips and excursions. Regulation 4531, field trips and excursions. Policy 4532, school volunteers. Policy 4710, grading systems. Policy 4750, promotion and retention of students. Policy 4760, makeup opportunities. Policy 4810, teaching about controversial issues. And policy 4850, animals in school. We don't need a motion or anything, because it's just first readings. Can I ask before we move on, is everything in 3.13 the same as 3.14? It looks like the numbers are the same. I just don't want to read it twice.
You don't?
No.
I believe it's a
Can I, can I do a second reading and approval all at once?
Can we just do like, letter A to BD, like there's a hole, instead of reading?
We read them at the last. Yeah, a lot of the last
If everybody's okay, I am okay with that. Do we need a motion for the second reading? Just the approval on, okay, so 3.13, second readings, A through B, B. And 3.14, approval of the same policies, A through B, B. Can I have a motion?
A motion?
Second. Discussion? Questions? Comments?
Impressive list?
Very impressive.
Yes. Policy committee's different, and it is appreciated, or maybe not.
More.
I'll just get them more. No problem. They just came in 5,000 series, we'll start next week.
The role, Mrs. House?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hirakawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. String?
Yes.
Okay, 4.0, old business, if you have any. 5.0, new business, I don't see any. Does anybody have anything? No? 6.0, informational. 6.1, our next regular meeting, April 13th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. 6.2, candidate petitions for membership on the Board of Ed, due by April 5th, no, due by April 17th, 2017, at 5:00 PM. 6.3, drawing by lot for position on voting machine, that takes place in the superintendent's office at 9:00 AM on April 18th, 2017. 6.4, Boce's budget vote and election, April 25th, at 7:00 AM, superintendent's office. 6.5, budget hearing, May 9th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. 6.6, meet the candidates, May 9th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Annual school, school board election and budget vote, May 16th, 2017, from noon to 9:00 PM. And we have the one budget hearing that we added tonight, which was April 10th, at 6:30 PM. 6.8, opportunities for the public to be heard, did anybody sign up?
No.
It's your last chance, anybody want to speak? Just want to state your name.
Jean Marie Steffek.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask a question and make a couple of comments. The snow plow person and the garbage service person, are they who we have now, are these new, are they a rollover for what we have now?
Yes.
Okay. I just wondered, because I know our guys are out there driving too, supplementing the plowing and the clearing and
Oh, yeah.
All that, and like, the price of salt, it's like amazing, it's crazy.
It's a lot of salt.
You know, so when you, and then to move it, it's just so much. Anyway, that was just my question. Two comments during the president, the president, we don't want him here. During the principal's report, and she was talking about the internal trainings, I just wanted to thank you for that opportunity. I thought that the, the discourse afterwards between teachers, really analyzing our own practice and coming to a consensus on best practice together, was one of the best professional discussions I've had all year, so thanks for that, that was really helpful, I thought. Thanks, thank you to Andrew for doing that for everyone, going from place to place. And the other thing, I just wanted to thank Dr. Riordan too, for the procedure and the acknowledgement for, on behalf of the Policy Committee, for asking for input from different teachers and including us, which hasn't always been the case, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you for the input.
I think it's a way to really get everyone involved at every level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Committee, thank you. And thank you, committee, because actually, the committee also supports that, so thank you.
We got to go to the people that use them all the time, if you don't use them, so.
Anybody else? Okay. I don't think we need another executive, did we?
I just wanted to comment, I don't know if anybody read the, or NISBA thing we got, but this article speaks to what Ed's issue was. When we had the delay in facilities planning at State Ed for the plans, the school board's newspaper just had an article, hundreds of desks are empty at SED and local districts feel repercussions. It's true, SED, so many empty desks, they're not hiring, talks about division of budgets rolling in, the commissioner's trying to address it, so I just thought it was really hit home, because we felt the repercussions of it, as did many districts, and it's the districts that suffer. It was good to see it in writing, and I'm sure it's not just education, all agencies are having the same issue, so.
Good point. Okay, I guess we will need a motion to adjourn, and we'll move. Any one second?
Second.
Hold those in favor. Hi?
Hi.
Call those again.
Oh, Ed.